Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting, February 22, 2016. If you're watching from home, you can access an agenda online on our website at www.livonypublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along with this evening's agenda if you'd like to. If you're here in our audience, our agendas can be found outside our doorway alongside our Audience Communications slips. First item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. Just to let you know that the content of our meeting this evening, before we go into Audience Communication, it doesn't look like we have any, but the meeting tonight is a Committee of the Whole Meeting, and by that it is a working meeting of some sorts, as some folks would refer to. There will be a lot of discussion going on in our meeting this evening, however, there will be no votes taken. Items this evening will either be referred back to another committee of the Whole Meeting for further discussion and getting ready for voting, or if we have all the information that we need, they'll be sent to vote at our next General Meeting or Voting Meeting that will be coming up. So you'll see a lot of discussion tonight, but don't expect any votes. It's not on our agenda. The next item on our agenda is Item 1, Audience Communications. I don't have any blue slips from any members of the audience. Would anybody like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item on our agenda, Item 2, Committee of the Whole. I do not have any Committee of the Whole items. Ms. Selfis, is there anything you wanted to add to Committee of the Whole?
We do not. We'll be building in sight tonight.
Okay, all righty. The next item is Item 3, Building in Sight, and I will turn that over to Mr. Johnson as the chair.
Thank you, President Burton. We have six items under Building in Sight tonight, so Ms. Abby was exercising her voice a little while ago, and we're going to start with 3, A Quarterly Report for 2013, Plant Maron Crescent.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, if I can, I think Mr. Terrio got delayed. I'm not sure if it was traffic, or I hope nothing more serious than that, so if we could skip and come back to the Quarterly Report and start with our Commissioning, our Item B, Commissioning for Phase 2 Projects, and come back to the Quarterly Report.
We are merely plonked in your name.
Thank you so much. So, happy to be here this evening, everyone, to bring forward several 2013 bond projects. As you know, we have been filling in our Phase 3 projects for this summer. We've already brought you the elementary schools. We've brought you the middle schools. This evening, we'll be presenting the high school, Stevenson High School. We're very excited to get started with, as well as a couple other projects, including the commissioning for this year, as well as the last couple of bids for Johnson Upper, Johnson and Holmes Middle School. Sorry about that. We had a couple of bids that, you remember, that we set aside, that we didn't open and rebid one item for that. And then we also have our security proposal for Phase 3 as well. And last but not least, finally, we're bringing you the Randolph Painting Project. So that was the last bid on our elementary schools that we had not finished, or the last trade. So with that, we are going to start with commissioning for the Phase 3 projects, and you'll recall that when we went, started this project three years ago, that we had gone out for commissioning services and bid out for the five years and got our pricing settled for five years with Selinger. And so what we're bringing forward to you tonight is the proposal for this summer's package. So we've looked at that pricing that we've had, the extent of the work for this year, and so that's our first project that we're bringing forward for you this evening. So with that, I'll go ahead and let Scott get started on the details. And everyone, Scott Smith from Plant Maron Crescent.
Thank you, Ms. Abby. Good evening, everyone. Got kind of a full palette, really, as Ms. Abby spoke regarding the construction. We've got five different proposals. This will probably be the last really big one that you'll see from us for the upcoming construction calendar year. But the first thing is, is the commissioning, and that, again, is being recommended to Selinger Associates. They're a local business here in Livonia, and they did do the commissioning the past two years. So we would recommend that they be taken on as a change order again to their contract. Their proposal this year in Section 1 of Tab A is for $87,500 with a contingency amount of $17,500 for a total recommend of $105,000. This would be for the six schools, Grant, Hoover, Randolph, Johnson, Holmes, and then Stevenson. The recommendation last year for Selinger included both Phases 4 Franklin, so there's nothing more to request this time around. This is a slight reduction from last year. There's a little bit less work to do at Stevenson, given some of the renovations that have already taken place there. And then we've just looked at some efficiencies, too, to make sure that we weren't doing some redundant work. So if there was some efficiencies that were being duplicated, then we offer that as a cost savings this year to the district. And Section 3 is just a copy of their proposal, laid out very similarly to previous years, a base proposal of $84,000, and that includes them to come back at 10 months and do a follow-up visit with the district and look at the different systems. And then the alternate one would be to come back at 20 months and do a similar visit. And the reason we picked those times, again, was just to coordinate with some of the warranty work that's done by the subs, subcontractors. So if they find anything, we want to identify it ahead of time and get it addressed by the relative respective parties, so that it can be covered under warranty as needed. So that's similar to what we've done in the past, and, again, what we'd recommend here for this year. So that would be, that would be the commissioning piece. Is there any questions relative to that? Any questions?
Mr. Johnson, these items that we're talking about tonight, we would like to, if the board so moves to move forward, to have a regular, not a not regular, special voting meeting on March 7, as we had discussed earlier, in order to have these items approved, if the board so moves, so that we can go ahead and get these items going for the summer, especially Stevenson, that's really our big-ticket item as we go forward. This particular item would be a change order. We still bring it to the board for their formal approving, given the dollar amount on it, but this particular item on the commissioning would be a change order, because we currently have a contract with Selinger.
Okay. And this, again, we've come in under budget even on this item.
Correct.
Any questions, comments?
I do have one question.
Ms. McCall.
Thank you. The pricing, their hourly rates, there's no difference from last year to this year?
No, those have been carried over.
It's just everything's carried over. Just volume. Okay.
All right, so this will go on our special meeting for the 7th.
Thank you.
All right, do we just want to go down from there?
I think we could, and then come back to our...
And then come back to, all right.
Sounds like we have our binders open.
Okay, so that, then we'll go to the construction bid, Stevenson?
Correct, thank you. This is our second high school that we're making a recommendation on this evening. This is Item C on your agenda, but Item B in your bid tabulation book that we're looking through. And Stevenson is, as you know, very much like Franklin in terms of size and scope of work. And we have, of course, done a fair amount of work in Stevenson High School already in terms of classroom renovation. There's still a lot to do, especially as we talk about the auditorium. And if anyone wants to know how big the auditorium is going to look like at Stevenson, go ahead and drive by Franklin. You'll get a pretty good visual of what that looks like. So Franklin auditorium is coming along very well. So we're excited to bring the bid results to you this evening. The same with Stevenson this evening, you're going to look at the budget numbers, and we'll talk about them, and we are a little bit over budget, as we had anticipated, the same as Franklin. The main thing that we are over budget is, as it relates to the civil work, the site work outside of the school. So in terms of both the site for the auditorium, as well as we're talking about our, and Scott can talk to a little bit better, oh, and Paul's here, too. Thank you, Mr. Terrio, welcome. Also can talk about it, as we're changing the entrance and exit lanes for the schools and making that safer. As you know, we went to Wayne County for those permits last year. We're starting that process with Stevenson now, so that we can make that a safer entrance and exit for both our students and staff. So that's a really big piece of some of the work that has changed here, again, as well as some just normal construction budget pressures. But I'll let them go through the details of where we are with the bids and with the budgets, and then be happy to fill in with questions. So, next, Stevenson.
Did you want to touch on, Paul, did you want to touch on budget at all to start?
We can go ahead and present it, and then we can talk about that at the end, I guess.
Sure. So, again, flipping to Tab B, we have our cover letter. So, all said and done, this award recommendation is for about $18,450,000. That's all-inclusive of the CM fees, contingency dollars. Given that we're over budget here, we did reduce contingency down to 7%, which is a change from last year where we were at 8%. We feel comfortable with that, given a lot of the due diligence that was done reconciling troubled areas from Franklin and trying not to repeat those same pitfalls. So we felt comfortable with that. One thing you won't see in here, there are three categories: the painter, the signage guy, and the testing and balancing. Three non-critical categories that we'll bring next time. We wanted to make sure we got these in to this board for recommendation, given the critical nature of, and the long lead items that are associated with those for the other ones. So bids were taken just last Tuesday, in fact, and there was over 30 categories. So I guess, before I forget, I'd like to thank Jeff Hamilton with the Ock Company sitting behind me. They've been very busy and diligent throughout the process, bidding, awarding, making sure we get good coverage. We had a really good turnout, very strong, a lot of detailed bid categories here, and, again, very good coverage. Over 100 bids were taken. The 100 that I put in the letter just represents the 30 categories here tonight. Jumping into Tab 2, this is more of our budget summary. Again, as was previously discussed, we were planning on moving the $2.5 million from the sinking fund to help augment some of the pressures that we've been seeing in the site work that, you know, wasn't part of the original bond. So what you'll see is we're at about $1.2 million projected overage for Stevenson with that, with that $2.5 million. Probably is going to be in the neighborhood of $1.4 to $1.5 when it's all said and done, when we get to award the last three categories. And I should mention, there's a couple of small alternates, mostly related to the site, that we're, again, going through the due diligence with, and if those are something we feel strongly to recommend, we'll bring those along with the next, those along with the three other bidders for next time as well.
If I could just touch on the budget real quick? Go ahead.
So the three remaining pieces, the painter, the signage, and the testing and balancing, would be in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $300,000?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yep. Probably on the low, about $225,000 and $310,000 on the high.
Okay.
So we're on a little bit of a bad run here this spring with, this winter with bidding, as you can tell. If you think back to January, we had made a presentation of last year's budgets and kind of wrapping those up, where we had about $900,000 in savings that we wanted to move into owner contingency. And at that time, we had about $1.1 million in owner contingency left, so that was about $2 million. We had also talked last year about transferring $2.5 million from Franklin, so essentially we had about $4.5 million in contingency. If you look at, you know, the three elementary schools, Johnson and Holmes, and now Stevenson, you know, we're closer to about $6 million over budget, which leaves us a gap of about $1 million and a half. The good news, or about $1 million, actually. The good news is, as we just sold the second series of bonds, we had some money squirreled away for, if the market had looked unfavorably upon us as far as closing costs or interest rates or anything like that. But that sale went great, and we're looking at moving $3 million back over into owner contingency out of a different line item in the budget. So while it's not great news all around, we do have somewhere between $2 and $2.5 million in owner contingency, even with these awards coming in over budget quite a bit. So with the two transfers from the sinking fund, with some transfers internally in the budget, we are still in pretty good shape. It doesn't feel like it after taking it on the chin three times in a row, but that's why we set the budget up the way we did initially, so.
And just to add, you'll recall that we had talked about doing these two site work projects out of the sinking fund, even before, long before we had talked about bond planning. We had talked about getting some studies done and looking at all three of our high schools, but starting with Franklin and Stevenson, I think, in order to address some of these issues. So we said, as we started to do our bond planning, we said, hold on, let's wait and see what, you know, what other site work we might have to do. So these are not a big surprise that we're using sinking fund for the site work, because that was our original intent. So it might be a little bit bigger project than we had intended, but certainly part of what we had originally planned for.
Sir?
Yeah, I think the remainder of this is really just some of the detail behind it.
This might be a really elementary question, but once money is moved from the sinking fund into the bond fund, it is forevermore bond fund money?
Well, actually, it's, they're using verbiage that I wouldn't use as, from an accounting standpoint. We'll write checks out of the sinking fund as we need them, so we won't spend it if we don't have to.
So you didn't take the loans?
Right. Right, exactly. It's a very good question.
We're oversimplifying it just a little bit.
Any other questions before we move on?
And just another, you know, we've been doing estimates all along, and we, you know, our last estimate, we actually came in very close to the, the recommendation before you is actually very close to our most current estimate.
We just didn't like the estimates.
Right. Which has been, you know, consistent. The estimates have held very well so far, despite all the pressures we've seen in the market and whatnot. Tabs 3 and 4 are really just a summary. Tab 4 has all of the various subcontractors that we're recommending here. Bless you. Some guys from last year that were on Franklin will also be working here if the recommendation is approved for Stevenson. In theory, those guys, you know, have learned some lessons along the way and should bid well, bear well for us, bode well for us, as we go to build Stevenson this summer. And, again, it just shows the three categories that we've left off for this recommendation as well. And then Tab 5 is really all of the individual bid tabs from each of the 30 bid categories. So a big recommendation, for sure, biggest one of the summer, and the bulk of what we're here to present tonight, in terms of dollar values.
One question. We talked about the traffic lights.
Mm-hmm.
Are those included in these calls?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Are we talking about adding one traffic light?
There'll be two, actually.
Two, okay. Two additional?
One gets replaced, basically, or updated, and then a new one.
Okay.
One additional, but they'll both be new lights.
Yeah, they'll be modernized and...
Stay where you are.
Okay. How, I know we've had, let's just call it, discussion with the county on this over the years. Is that sort of resolved, how all of that's going to take place?
I think so. I'll have you answer that.
Yeah, we started early this time, trying to make sure we had all the Wayne County permit issues in hand. We don't actually have approval yet, but we've had numerous meetings and made very good progress. We're on the same page. I think our final submission is into them to review, so we're very optimistic we'll have a permit here before we break ground, whereas that was not the case last time.
Okay.
I think we know better what they're...
We're talking about it for...
Yep.
Okay. I see Jeff was sort of...
Is he nodding back there?
He's nodding back there.
Jeff has spent a lot of time and effort making sure that was the case as well, so...
All right, very good. Any other questions? So this will go on for the special meeting as well. Okay, that'll take us to construction rebids, Johnson Upper Elementary and Holmes.
Yes, again, just looking at, as you know, we've already awarded the bulk of the bids for Johnson and Holmes, and this evening, we are just recommending, I think it's just one trade this evening, and I'll go ahead and let Scott give you the details.
Yep, the details are pretty quick and short here, but last time we held back, we didn't open the steel bids for Johnson and Holmes. We only had one bid, and it was actually late. So it went back out to bid. We did receive four bids this time. We're recommending Morkin and Sowards to do both schools. And predominantly, this is a very small category, and most of the work represents the archways that you see in the front of the buildings, and just some miscellaneous steel to support some of the mechanical equipment. It's about $25,000 per school. The total additional recommend from last time is $53,245, which is, in Tab 1 is the only place you'd probably see that. But that brings the total recommendation up to $12,429,068. And it's worth noting, this would be, this would conclude all of the awards for Johnson and Holmes.
Questions, comments? Seeing none. Was this bidder the one who bid late?
It was not.
It was not? Okay, but they did, they've done some of the other schools?
I believe they have.
Okay.
I worked on them from a long time ago. The last 10 or 15 years, I've probably worked with them a dozen times, so they're actually, I think, down in Romulus. They're a pretty good firm, so no concerns.
All right, very good. No other questions, then? This will go on for the special meeting as well. All right, then are we going to, the proposal, do we want to run through these, Ms. Abby, and then go back up?
We just have one more on the, two more on bids, and then go back up to the quarterly.
All right, so then we'll do the security proposal for Phase 3 projects.
Correct. And, again, this particular item would be a change order. This is for the security, which, as you know, is pretty much our security alarms and our swipe cards for our entrances and motion detectors in the buildings. And this Security Designs was the firm that was, when we went out to bid the first time two years ago, was the company that was awarded the work. So, again, this is our updating the contract for any changes for this year and making it available for all of the schools. So that I'll let Scott give you any details. If there's anything to add, feel free.
That's correct. It would just be a change order to Security Designs, and similar with Selinger, this is a proposal that went out back prior to the start of year 1, and Security Designs was the low bidder there, low responsive bidder. And they were awarded a contract similar to last year. We ordered a, we did a change order for them to incorporate last year's projects, including all of Franklin. And this would be a similar process here, where we would recommend the six schools from this year, including all of Stevenson, to cover both summers. Security Designs is a firm that the district had worked with even prior to the bond, and still does do some ongoing maintenance-type work with them. So they actually are a good fit. They have their equipments in the building, and it just happens to be that they're the low bidder as well. So we feel confident in recommending them again for this year. The prices are very similar to last year, and as Ms. Abby said, it's a combination of security, which would be your motion detectors, and then also the card access, the swiping and the badges that get you in and out of the building. We've added some openings at various spots around the building through discussions with the principals, again, which we've done in the past, to facilitate teacher entrances or recess doors, things like that. So, again, a total recommendation here of $107,839, including contingency dollars. There's a little more detail than the other tabs.
And the bid tabs?
Yeah.
The bid tabs are behind the tabs.
Tabs of tabs.
Okay, any questions? Don't see any. All right, so this will be on for the special meeting as well.
Thank you.
And then we'll go to F, Construction Bid Painting, only at Randolph.
As you know, we had set aside for some lengthy review and analysis, and I'll let Paul and Scott talk about this, but we have, at Randolph, we have some issues relative to getting the building prepped for painting. It's not the painting itself that's the issue, but getting it prepped for painting and determining exactly what that would look like. So we took some time, spent some time looking at that before we brought that to you this evening, but we are prepared to make a recommendation for Randolph for painting. So this will be the, again, the last trade for Randolph, but I'll let Scott tell you about the details.
Yes. So this would be for Randolph specifically. We have already awarded the painting at the other two elementary schools. This recommendation would be for $117,933, including contingency and adjustments to the fees for McCarthy and Smith. Really, we held on this because of the existing conditions there. We wanted to make sure that we had ample time to actually physically bring these contractors in to the building and observe firsthand all of the troubled areas and make sure that they felt comfortable with their bid. And during that process, in fact, two of the bidders said, you know what, that I didn't figure it correctly, and requested that they withdraw their bid. So we're actually under the third bidder, but he's met there, he's reviewed it, he feels comfortable, and we feel comfortable putting him in front of you guys tonight for recommendation to complete the work over at Randolph. Ms. McCall.
Just to ask, the problems with the paint in the building today, is the material that's on the walls now not adhering? Is that what the problem is?
Correct. Yeah, the top layer of paint is latex paint, and the layer underneath it is more of an oil base, and I don't think it was prepped right before they put the final coat on, to be honest. So we spent a lot of time trying to make sure, how are we going to get that top layer of paint off? How do we prep the layer below that is bonding? And then how do we go back over with new paint? So we just wanted to make sure we were very thorough with the low contractor, and as it turns out, the two lowest contractors didn't have the job bid out the right way. They didn't have all that prep work included, which is why it took us a while to get to the bottom of it, so.
Well, you probably already know this, but Stevenson kind of has the same problem.
It did, yeah, very similar. And we talked about sandblasting and some extreme draconian measures out there, too, but we decided that we think we have a better solution for that building, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Johnson?
So what are we doing? Should kind of, we have to balance that.
You've been part of those meetings more than I have.
Yeah, a lot of it's just in the prep, again. There's going to be in the corridors and in the gym. We're actually going to physically scrape a lot of that stuff, which isn't the norm. You don't normally have to go to those extremes or those measures. And that's part of what drove this price up a little bit, if you looked at maybe some of the other schools. So they're going to do that. We're really going to stress, you know, the prep this year with all the contractors. Everybody's been doing that in their post-bid reviews, you know, hey, we need to remove the oils from the walls, we need to scarify the walls, give it some surface area to bond to, and, but really, we have to get down to that layer, I think. If you just paint over it, we're just going to have the same problems again, so. That's, that's where we've spent a lot of extra attention, in the corridors and then in the, in the gym, where they've had a lot of peeling already.
Yeah, the gym is the worst of it by far.
Okay, there's no question.
I just wanted to recap where we are. So I know I included this in your packet last week, but you recall that we do not have a voting meeting until March 21st. So in order to keep us on schedule, we had requested, a couple of months back, to add to our committee meeting of March 7, which is to be held at Webster. They're presenting on their school improvement plan. So we will, prior to that, we will hold a short voting meeting on these items if you are ready to go at that time. So, again, there's a tremendous amount of information in here. We have approximately two weeks until that vote. As Ms. Abby noted on a number of memos in your packet, the bid responses are available in the business office if there's any additional questions, or Ms. Abby, myself, Mr. Terrio, and Mr. Smith would be happy to answer those. So we have about a two-week period now for review of this information that we covered this evening, and then we'd like to come to a vote on March 7, whatever would be agreeable to that.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a question only in the, the underlying paint that was there, was that different from any of the other schools?
I think it was more the top layer that was different. I think when they put that top layer on, it just... I think when they put that top layer on, it just, the wall wasn't prepped right, and it did not adhere at all, where in the other buildings, the top layers of paint were fairly well adhered. So it's really just a matter of getting that top layer off before we try to repaint down onto something that is still bonded to the block. So it was really more the top layer, I think, than anything else.
Was it the same contractor who put all the layers on?
You know, I don't know. Over the years, if you went and looked, I bet you there's 30 coats of paint on those walls. So whether it was done in-house or an outside contractor.
I was going to say, sometimes we do things that we do ourselves, so.
Sometimes it's the PTA or PTO with best of intentions, and it just doesn't work out. And I don't know if that's the case here, but sometimes it is.
Yeah, you go and chip off a piece, and it's, you know, four inches thick.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Okay. All right, if no other questions, then we'll move up to A, the quarterly report.
Yeah, I apologize. I was trying to win an epic battle with a copyer and printer. I lost. I have 11 by 17, so I'll save eight and a half by 11. I will send this over electronically, though. If you can read Scott's spreadsheets with a tiny type, hopefully you can read this one. But I'll send this over electronically, and I'll bring a log myself for these next picks.
As Paul distributes it, you'll recall that this has been a part of our bond process since we started, where Plant, Moran, and Cresso, working with the district's business office and accounting department, looks at all of the ledger items, both in their system, which is called E-Builder, and compares that to our system, which is called Smart. So in other words, we're comparing Levonia's records to Plant, Moran's records every quarter. Actually, we do it every month and then report on it quarterly, to make sure that we have accounted for every single dollar and that we agree on how every single dollar's been accounted. So there's a couple of objectives with this quarterly report. One is to keep the Board of Education up to date on where we are in the process, as well as looking at those financial reconciliations, and then, of course, projecting out where we're going in the next several months. So I know Paul's going to go through the details, but again, just want to make sure that you know that this is something that we brought to the Board of Education every quarter, and that after this evening, when we get that electronic copy from Mr. Terrio, we'll go ahead and post that on our website as we have. And there are also archived copies out there as well, if anyone needs to look at them. So with that, I'll let Paul get started.
Thank you. So if you look at.
I know, it's a little, it's a little rough to me.
If you look at the center section, this report is as of this morning. Obviously, our budget's still $195 million. That's good. Current commitments were $93 million, or just over $93 million. We've actually paid out a little over $75 million to date, with about 24 left to go. As far as the cash flow finance section in the bottom center, obviously, we sold the second series of bonds, which is great news.
Close in two days.
Close in two days, sorry. Keep backing up.
Sorry about that.
And you can see through December 31st, we had spent just under $67 million. The center section is the quarterly, end of the quarter report, and that matches exactly what's in E-Builder, matches exactly what's in the schools' books. So everything matches out, which is good. I went ahead and put the construction fund deposit numbers to the right. Those are preliminary numbers that we're actually going to meet in a couple of weeks to make sure still match up. Critical.
So I'm sorry, Paul was talking about in that bottom center square, the bond series two, the remainder to be sold that we've been waiting for all this time, to see those numbers pop up there, so that's good.
If you look at the bottom left, critical project issues, really, we're wrapping up last year's projects, just making final payments. The bid and award phase for this year's projects, obviously, is why we're here tonight. We have a lot of contracts that are being written, purchase orders that are being put into the system, so that we can start to get that set up for this year, and then start to get people paid here in the next couple of months. Budget reconciliation meeting, so that's what I was just alluding to. We're going to be sitting down with the accounting department here shortly to talk about the second bond sale, make sure we know exactly how much money is available for construction and for expenditures, and then make sure we understand the accounting procedures, too, because now, to your point, we have sinking fund dollars, we have two different bond series, we need to make sure that we're accounting for those separately, tracking them separately. We know which account checks are being cut out of, so that we keep everything by the book, so that'll be in the next couple of weeks. Sinking fund projects, in addition to the high schools, there's obviously other sinking fund projects going on, whether it's McKinley's demolition, some paving projects that we talked about a few weeks ago, some of the window replacements at the back wing here even. So we do have quite a few other projects that are going on at the moment. And then enrollment projections and utilization reports, we're still working on that as well. The enrollment projections just got put on my desk this morning for review, so I'll be looking at those by tomorrow. I'll try to get those over this week for you guys to take a look at, so. And then the utilization piece, we're still walking buildings and still meeting with principals and things like that, so. But we're still on track to get that done in March, so. Three-month look ahead, really, you know, we're here tonight with Stevenson and some of the other rebids and miscellaneous awards. We do have one more cycle to go through in April. I think we've got the moving, and that might be it at this point.
IT and regular.
And the IT, yep. So we do have a few more awards to make April 11th, or at least recommendations to make on the 11th, and then hopefully awards on the 18th of April. Then we've got contracts to issue out, cementals and RFIs are starting to come in already for mechanical equipment, for light fixtures, windows, long lead-time items like that. And then we've got, you know, materials to get ordered, and we're actually going to be starting second shift construction in March, similar to what we did last year. We may be even doing some abatement work over spring break in certain buildings, trying to get a jumpstart on some of the demolition and things that we need to do. But mostly, it'll be mechanical, electrical work going on at night above the ceilings and things like that. IT work will be going on as well, so. And then last day of school this year is June 17th, so we have, as I mentioned, the moving left to present, that RFP's on the street for the IT move and the moving for all the boxes and furniture and everything like that, so we're hoping to have those for you in April, so. And then the bottom right, it's just kind of the phasing schedule, same thing you've seen before, so. Next year's buildings are kind of to be determined at the moment, and then obviously Churchill as well, so.
So I think we're, my voice carries on its own.
Must be me, I changed seats all of a sudden, exactly.
It's a plague in your head, Paul.
We are on schedule, where we expect it to be at this place in the bond schedule, both in terms of our construction, in terms of our technology, bond use, furniture and equipment. We'll start to look at, you know, some other furniture and equipment that we wanted to wait until we sold the second series, and had that be a part of our second series, so we'll start to look at some of those things as well. Those departments will be happy to see that coming, and we are where we thought we would be at this point, so pleased to bring this forward tonight and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? The only question I have, could you, just for the benefit of the community, could you tell us, I know we've sold the second series, but can you, just sort of bring us up to date of how well we did on this sale?
Yeah, I will, pleased to. We sold these, this bond series at a premium, which we did with our first series as well, which means that invest, oh, thanks, Paul, investors were eager to get into municipal market bonds. We had $87 million, or $75 million to sell, and we had well over $200 million of commitments from investors in the market that were interested in our bonds. Unfortunately, we couldn't sell $200 million, and we weren't authorized to do that, but we did sell these at a premium, which means that we will get more funding than we would have. So we are looking at $76 million bond issue, we're actually receiving about $87 million, so it's a very positive thing. In addition, is, which really means at the end of the day, that it's less money that our taxpayers need to repay on it. We still will have $195 million plus interest to spend, but what it really means is that our taxpayers, their principal and interest payments will be less than it would have been, so very pleased with that information, as well as fees came in well, so they're just, costs weren't as high as we originally anticipated when we put the bond sale together back early 2013 and got ready for that sale in June of 2013. So conservative estimates, but nonetheless, it came in very well, so very pleased.
I want Chair and the board and our community to thank you for all our work that you put in your team.
Team effort, right.
To get its own. Okay, any, anything else on this? All right, then President Burton, that concludes Building and Site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That also concludes our agenda for our committee of the whole this evening. The board will be going into a study session and a closed session following this, but we will be off air from this point on. We will see you again, we are off next week, and we will see you again televised from Webster on March 7th. Good evening, we're adjourned.